Father, we thank you today. We bless you for life, health, strength. Opportunity to get up this morning. We just appreciate you for all that you've done and all that you do, all that you will do. We pray your blessings, your guidance from this meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, it's the topic of this discussion of Air Force. And um, I'm trying to contact the meetings. Presentation on what we might be able to do with Dillon Airport.
I'm gonna let Tony go first.
Okay.
Okay, I've got something to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you look at your, the, uh, the packet there in front of you, we have a picture here. I'm more of a visual presenter, so I like to look at a lot of pictures when I describe things. As you look at this, basically, the supply chain in economic development has rail, port, and then you see trucking there. The only thing that's missing is the airport. So you look in terms of importing and exporting medical or critical manufacturing parts, the airport becomes critical. And there's a connection. That dot is actually connected to the inland port. If you look at the second page, the other thing that happens when we import goods is we actually bring it in, in the container, store it in a container, and then at some point in time, we break down and distribute, or we may create some type of service where we assemble, reassemble certain good to be distributed out. It could be a car, it could be a part such as an engine. And that's why the port, the inland port would be a magnet. But the airport is very critical to that. Also, if you look at that third page, again, when I look at pictures, this would be a visual of what our inland port, very similar to what it would look like. What you see surrounding that are a lot of distribution, big box distribution, logistics. Now, what I'm saying is beyond that, what I envision is also a very active airport. I would personally like to see runway extended. The leaders of Harbor Freight, they utilize a G5, which is Gulfstream, a small jet. At least a G5, I think is a 5,000-foot runway. They make G150s.
Well, they can get by with 4500.
Yep, they make G150s as well. But what I'm saying is, it's not just passenger travel, but it's very critical to the functions of economic development. If history has taught us anything, we look at a place like Selma Housery that located here in Dillon because of the airport. It's very critical. And I think we have some opportunities to attract some folks that have an interest in the inland port as well, like DHL, like UPS, like FedEx, to actually have some type of hangar here at the airport to have a functioning airport as well. Now, this last page, I won't take too long. I use the term "airpark" a lot. And basically, what this is, is an industrial park located adjacent to an airport. And it especially makes it attractive if there's an interstate close by, which we have, and if there's Class 1 rail close by, which we have. So if you look over by Wigs, there's Class 1 rail. You look over where Dillon Furniture is, the old Selma Housery, there's I-95. And then we have our airport. Beyond that, south of that, the next exit down, we have the inland port. So we have to connect those dots. And so, again, I'm going back to this first page of these four squares of this puzzle. To have world-class, a world-class supply chain and distribution, and to ensure that we sustain an economic development for many years to come, these four dots have to connect. We got three of those dots, three pieces of the puzzle. It's only one piece that's missing, and that's the airport. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it over to Mr. Taylor.
Good morning, y'all. Good morning. I'm just gonna briefly give you the same synopsis that I give to executives. Questions, I hope I answered. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer any of the rest of them. Aviation, I've been in it all my life. Opportunity to see Dillon County. You know, if we look at our geography, Marver County's got a very fine facility. Marion County's got a fine facility. They got a terminal building, they got 5,000 feet, but they don't have interstate. Marver County's same. Lomerton does a pretty good business, but they have Interstate right side airport. When we asked the question, well, how are we gonna do all of this? Over the years, when I was the airport manager at Florida for ten years, we took a place that was out eight and a half miles out of town, and we converted it to two new hangars. New terminal building, office complex. Went from 4,000 to 6,000. Of course, there was a little different scenario because all the money that was on that, there was five tracts of land, and all the money that was raised, they had cane on that land, they had pasture on that land, and all the money that accumulated went into that airport fund in the county, it had to be spent on that airport. I think with Rodney, we talked about as far as South Carolina Airiness Commission, designated monies, said it's 150,000, but that's designated for some projects that were going on there, some projects. There was more money than that, but the project wasn't ever completed, the projects was never done. The airport, and the airport's not really closed. You can land there, but you land at your own risk. In the insurance industry, you have to have a minimum of 4,000 feet to meet the requirements of general aviation. They can land on 3,000. I landed on less, but you just, your insurance is not covered. And that's, I know that we don't have that, but down the road, we could have that. You ask where the monies are gonna come from, there was two things that the Airiness Commission wanted. That was fuel, and that was some type of temporary terminal building or office building where they could have a bathroom or weather briefing, so people could land and have some, take relaxation. That's all they required for us to be able to get that 150,000 started back. And then my understanding, talking in Columbia, was once that we, once the county went forth with that, then the airport would, they would start back to funding. They would give us 150,000 dollars every year, is what I was told. Once this is done, so then, and then we can designate that money as a, as a director or as a board to what we think needs to be best, we can talk about what needs to be, what is best, needs to be expended on that to come up to where we're talking about. Inland port's gonna be a big deal. I have talked to some of the representatives on the federal and on our congressional and senate side. And I did all this on my own, but I've talked to them. And everybody wants to be tagged with the inland port, because we know it's coming. This is the golden opportunity this time right now is to be able to let them have a part of it and help us with the federal funding. I really believe we can jumpstart what we need to do at the airport now. The gas and the fuel, I will not ask the county for any of that money. I've already got a promise that the money would come somewhere else to fuel it. And we're putting JAA and Low Lead Hunter. Normally, we just get by with Low Lead, but everything's running on turbines anymore, just about, that corporate world uses. So you would have to have that. Once we get, and you ask the question, well, where are we gonna get these 10-based airplanes? And that's what South Carolina Airiness Commission says we have to have 10-based airplanes. And I've got enough friends that's got airplanes, do, we can put airplanes at the airport. Because you take that picture, they sign a lease with the county, they're gonna pay us for a year. It doesn't say how long they're gonna be there. It just says they're gonna pay, they're gonna have a lease. We're gonna lease them a spot at the airport for a year, and they're gonna sign a lease to that accordingly. So that's our 10-based airplanes. And when you do your 10-bases, and you take that picture, and you send it to Columbia, some of Columbia sends it to Washington, we are now able to get our federal funding, the ball can start jumping. Other things that I have talked to different individuals, there's possibilities they would look at. And all these things are gonna generate income down the road. None of this is gonna happen like that. Not only do everybody understand that, but down the road, I've talked to a guy that wanted to put in a flight school, and I've told y'all this before. Trains about 25 to 30 students every 90 days. Most of them are from South Americans, some of them are from Latin. But they do do that. That's something to look at still. That's a county decision. What I'm saying is the people that made inquiries. One guy had a flight school, he wanted to move from Florida to here. Miami, New York. Dillon County's halfway for him. 95, you'd be surprised. I fly, I don't do, I don't have an IFR ticket, which means you fly instruments. I fly by the highway. I know where the signs is in Dillon County. I know where the red light's on. So, but a lot of people that's just out puddling around in the afternoons, fly by, by, by the highways, or about where they go. By the interstate. They know if you follow interstate, it's gonna go somewhere. We have another option. If you fly into Florida, you gotta fly into a controlled field. You gotta talk to somebody on the radio constantly, all the time. Dillon County doesn't have that. I have a brother that lives in North Carolina, and I had two guys call me, one from Pope Air Force Base, that has three, they have three flying clubs. They've been landing in Clough on a grass strip. Said they would love to land in Dillon if it was operating, and they'd buy fuel and stuff from us. Now, that, in that being said, also, the army over there has a couple, two or three flight schools, and they're looking for a place to go. You take Dillon County Airport, you go 100 miles up, this is what I did in Florida, you go 100 miles up, you draw a circle all the way around. In that 100 miles, there's a lot of county airports. There's a lot of people with airplanes. A lot of people got, they like to get out and tango. Fly. From, from 100-mile radius of any of those places in there, within 25 minutes with a decent airplane, you're at Dillon. But how you gonna create all of this? You get on the telephone, and you call them, and you go see, and you do these things, and you promote this airport. Then you get, you get the people in the county involved. You start having things like mini airshows, you can have car shows. Anything that creates activity broken to the airport. Businesses like to be at the airport or close by to the airport. Why? I don't know, but they just do. It's something about being at the airport. I know you look at it now, and you say, well, it's just out there. But I, you gotta, there was a quote that was saying, don't worry about what's at the point now, worry about what's down the road, what's coming. And that's what we gotta look at. I think there's a golden opportunity for the airport to prosper. It's a heart and soul matter. And it's something that I've done all my life. And I just want that opportunity, or somebody had that opportunity to have, to see that done. Talking about it, we can go back one more time on the federal funding. I think, when we talked to DOT, I mean, not DOT, but to the South Carolina Airness Commission, and I don't think we can get 45, we can get a 4,500 feet, but we can only get a 4,200 feet. When I say that, the runway can have 500 on this end towards number nine. It can have 1,000 on the other end towards 95. That gives you your 45, but they're not gonna give you, they're gonna have a 300-foot threshold in there, is what was told to me. For those that don't fly, that threshold's gonna start at the very end. It's, it looks like arrows till it gets to that 300 feet, and there's a white line across it. You're supposed to land beyond the white line. You can take off on the threshold all the way at the back, but you're supposed to land a little bit. Hey, that's just part of pieces of the puzzle. Just whatever you want.
What do we have out there right now, Charles?
We have zero, we got 3,000 feet on it.
3,000?
And you have to have 4,000?
It did fall. But the main thing, our concern is, before we can do anything, we gotta get it back open. We gotta get it, we gotta have a way to talk with somebody, and that's just a mere unicorn, so you can know that you're back on the air. I addressed with Rodney on things that he was concerned about, the insurance, about this, that, and the other. I said, all you need is, if I was lucky enough to have that position, I'll work, work through him. I'll handle all that bird and throat. People have to handle the rest too. I'll handle finding the monies to do. There's monies out there. There's matching monies. There's a million-dollar grant out there right now. You gotta match 10%, but then they give you 900,000. But that money's, there's monies out there, and you just gotta apply for those monies. That's what I did in Florida. I applied for those monies. And some we got, and some we didn't.
Can you use that money to extend airport wings?
Well, our federal funding would kick in on that. That's only, I believe, 5% and 5% and 9% to the federal government. But you, to get the stamps going, we need to get these processes going. You can get out of Wisconsin. Also, I've talked to people, I've talked to one guy that's got a radio shop. He works for a guy, he's been working for it for 12 years. He might do it for his own radio shop. He'll put his own building up, if the county will give him a spot. He can put his own building up, what cost the county anything, and then lease it. You might give him a free-year lease. Then after starting the second year, he pays for it. He pays for that spot. We done that kind of deal. We give a guy, we give him a free year when we built the hangar. We give him a free year, and then after that, he started paying 750 dollars a month. But I also helped him create business, bringing airplanes in. You get a man that's got an ANI, Richard knows about this, that works on airplanes. He creates traffic. He creates people coming in. There's just all kind of things that you can do to start it, and it doesn't cost a lot, just getting the things started. So, anybody got any questions?
Does anybody else in the audience want info from everybody? Anybody got anything they'd like to say?
I'm ready. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Let me ask you one, Charles.
Oh, boy.
For him to let, for him to land that goal for Harbor Freight, he's gotta have 5,000.
Well, I did some checking on that. Depends on what, that goes again, if they got a full crew in there, or they're already loaded down. If it's not, he can get in on that. We got good approaches on that, at that airport. It would be a little different if you had cities you were worried about coming across the top of them. But he, he can get in on that. You know, because he ain't gonna be home to a three people, maybe four at the most.
He can get in, but it's a sheriff's single cover.
Now, I haven't checked on that. All I know is 4,000 for general aviation and most turbo props. That's what I, that's going to the AOPA. Going to their, I'm going by what they say, because I went online and talked to that, to them about that.
Good morning. I'm here because 100 years ago, before any, most of y'all were here, I was appointed to the Dillon County Airport Commission. I don't even know if there's a record of that anymore. I don't even know if you know that there is a Dillon County Airport Commission. Way back, the whole Hartsel County manager, and I've served on it ever since, supposedly. It has not met in so many years. I don't even know. Hartsel's in his first term. It's the last time we've ever met. But during my, my life here in Dillon, I have made many trips to that airport, as I am an ex-pilot myself. We have an excellent facility, if that's my thing. SNF's from an approach out of Florence. A few years ago, I rode out there one night, and the beacon wasn't working. Oh, boy. I called Florence, because I had a plane coming in, and I was going to meet somebody. They said, we're not aware that the beacon's not working. I said, okay, you need to tell the person I was waiting on, he cannot land in Dillon, the beacon's out. Right there at that moment, that's the greatest liability you could have in Dillon County. Had he approached that airport and tried to land, and it listed as an airport with a beacon, and no beacon shining, and he tried to approach the landing and crashed, you wish you'd never heard the word airport. Because you're responsible for maintaining that airspace, that, that beacon, that tower, and that runway. And I've seen the runway so deplorable, I wouldn't have put a lot more out there on it. Now, you have done some work to it. I will admit that. It has been some work done to it the last, what, year? I think they re-blacktopped it. But there's grass growing through it. It would still be a, I'm not sure I'd want to land my King Air on it, let's put it that way. But over the years, I've watched county council do at least three studies on my right hand, on that airport. The last one, it cost you 50,000 dollars?
300,000.
300,000, excuse me. I'm late, I'm late. I was gonna say 50, you give me a break. But I know that the first one I ever saw cost 25,000. The second one cost, I believe maybe it's the second one I'm talking about, cost 50. And now we've done one for 300,000. And what have we done?
We got our 300 back.
Did you?
From Airiness. That's just, they declined, they turned us down for building a new airport, and reimbursed us for the money that we had spent.
I saw a letter prior to that application for that new airport, they had already denied it before you ever applied. So there was knowledge that that won't go out in the wind. My point to all this is, if we lose this airport, you gonna get another one. If we don't do something to upgrade the airport, and they declassify it, or what is it they call it, and they take it off the map?
They declassified it as a now.
Is it declassified now?
It's just a, it's just, it's a county airport, but it's not, it's not listed in the book as far as, it's not an open facility.
Well, if you lose it, you won't ever get one from, you won't ever have an airport in Dillon County, because you got one in Long Island, Florence, Marion, and Lansing. So I think if we're gonna ever save it, now's the time to start working on saving it. You've invested a lot of money in it. We know what it needs. And it's not an enormous amount of money to reactivate. You can do it with a double-wide trailer and, and obviously communications equipment, you got to have, and a bathroom, and the fuel supply, he just told you that he can get that done. And I understand, I understand it is a big thing to take on with all y'all, y'all play. I ain't, I won't even try to go there. But airport ought to be part of our economic development plan. We try it. It is a good thing for industry. I, I import fireworks. Okay? That ain't a big deal. You'd think, guess where my importers have to come to? I have to go to either Florence or Lomerton. You think they wanna ride 45 minutes or 30 minutes to meet with me? So we end up spending money in Florence and Lomerton to meet with our own suppliers, instead of driving them all the way to Dillon. They fly over Dillon to go there. But like Marion, I, I, all my private pilots' landings were mostly in Marion County and Dillon. Got a beautiful facility. Benetton uses it as an economic development too. They actually bring industry in and house them at the Benetton Airport in office space while they're related, and they provide office space, where they used to run up to do down and on. So it can be a very good economic development too. I love Tony's plan of putting industrial park around it. Would be a great plan. Obviously, we talked lots and lots of money to do that. And I know that problem too. But I, I think we've got an airport. Obviously, all your industry people want the airport large. At one time, we were gonna add 1,000 feet to it. We even filled in the I-95 end of it. Y'all, do you remember that? And all that came from the interstate. They all did it in here free just to get rid of it. And we were prepared to add that, I think, we'd go ahead 500 to that end or 1,000.
1,000 to that end.
1,000 to that end, and somehow, no, that never happened. But had we had 4,000 feet, and had 500 to the number nine, we'd have it.
We got it.
Because you can put a King Air in there, and it'll be covered by insurance. A Learjet? I don't know.
You can. The only thing with the G5s, the thing with the G5s was, you know, I'm going by what AOP told me, but I, I know that they can work off of that. But they might be, their insurance company requires them to have 5.
That's correct.
But then, you know, in talking to Harbor Freight and talking to Purdue, they have smaller airplanes that say that you can come to Dillon and, and would just, maybe they wouldn't fly that day. And I give all of y'all one of these packets right here. I brought it up here to Jamie too. All of y'all got one of them, and read the letter from Purdue. It was the best letter of all of them. And I think it created talk volumes to what they said they would do and all. And that's probably just some, that's probably not all they'd use it for. Look at the people that do business with them that would fly. And also, talked to Ron Barfield. Ron Barfield said a lot of these NASCAR boys that's got these young boys that are teaching the flight, or teaching the drive, they would probably use, they would come in, they, it would help him, because he could have some different kind of races, because they'd just fly them in and fly them out. The cars already be here. So that's just, and then, I guess Ron would be good to work with.
And I think we've reached out to Ron before, best I remember. But I think it's a great opportunity. I don't know when you can do it, but it ought to be on the agenda to do. Or, you're wasting money. I mean, if we can't make it bigger and better, it really has no value at its moment other than private pilots doing touch and goes or, or training. Until you, you got to expand it to get any kind of commercial activity. So, anyway, that's my thoughts.
Mr. Griff, and we sent you know, would you like to get, put some input in today?
The only thing, I, I think you've done a good job. I'd like to know that you're gentleman at the FAA, actually done a article on Dillon years ago.
Yeah, I've got that article.
You got it, where it does the videotape on?
Yeah, it was on YouTube.
Yes, on YouTube. I got it on my phone, if anybody would like to see it. Well, roughly 20 minutes or something like that, but I'd be more than happy to.
It's just got a lot of history and stuff about the airport, different things, that and the other. My dad flew out of there years ago when he went to work with Carl. We lived on the airport in 1960. That's been many years ago. Some of y'all are still children.
Rodney, you go ahead.
Yeah, I do, in fact. And all that was said here today, you gotta know, as an economic development background, I agree with everything you said. I absolutely do. It will be a major factor in what we do moving forward with the Selma Board. Y'all charge me to be prudent. So my approach is a little bit different, okay? It's an approach I want to apologize for, because we are spending, not our money, just the biggest money. Mr. Taylor is right. Here are federal dollars. That's what I did for Congressman Rice, one of the biggest things I, I did for him. Florence and Ori County got wards on a regular basis. Not really easy to get, but you can get them. Let me just go through bullet on this. I believe in the discovery stage. I mean, that's just my, my thought. I have had talks with the public-private partnership. The sheriff, I'm gonna just go through the bullet line. Sheriff identified $15,000, that unused money of a slot he didn't fill. That, that money will be gone in six months. Talking to the public-private partnership, we could, my thoughts are extend that money to the public-private partnership. They indicated some interest of really taking hold of this and supporting whoever we hire, if we decide to contract supporting that person with kind of what I call a management staff. But also, they indicated that some of the money they got, they could use to upgrade the facility, whether it's putting a, you know, housing a office out there or what. They did express some interest in that. I think this position should report monthly to county council. I think that's a way to, to monitor progress, to make sure that this is a feasible, just to prove on paper that it's feasible. I mean, I, I think we've got to get hardcore evidence, not folks saying I would use it, but actual contracts. And then evaluate it. And I believe after that evaluation, I believe that there will be overwhelming evidence that this is something we need to continue, probably on a permanent stage. But I, you know, my approach is just a little bit more prudent, because we're dealing with folks' money. Absolutely gonna be a viable airport, no question in my mind on what we got coming. I just don't know if diving in full speed ahead is the right approach at this time. But that's, that, that's my, my take on it.
Now, Rodney, you said let Dillon County run the airport. That means council would have to agree to let the partnership run the airport?
I, I think that would have to be done, that you, if y'all had comfort with that, that you'd have to agree for the public-private partnership to kind of manage that thing, but report to you. I don't think you're giving up any, any rights. You just, I'm just wondering. I just think you're, you're designating an entity to, to run that.
Let me, let me ask a couple questions. Let me make a couple comments on, concerning this. One of the things I thought of on the way up here and looking over some of the material, that one, you gotta think in terms that we've already have industries here, and we already have CEOs that are flying who went to the Florence area and have to either drive or run the car to come back over here. My point is this here, regardless of whether we can get some intelligence or not, we still need to try to get our airport up and running to help those people that's already, that's came to Dillon County, that's already here in Dillon. I mean, we've got people now, again, that's flying to Florence and driving from Florence to Dillon that. Dillon County would be more useful friendly to those people that has already showed us faithfully that they have made their home here in Dillon County if we had an airport up and running here in Dillon County, so they could just land here in Dillon. I think we can do this, and even, even in terms of, of the money, I just think, you know, that we, we can find the money, I think, in the general fund. When Clay was here, we know how the budget worked. There were monies created. There were monies spreaded pretty much in the general fund. And I think there's still money spreaded in the budget somewhere to, to get this airport up and running, has to have a person or body and a building pretty much sitting there to, to start the grassroots efforts of it. You know, that's just, that's just my thought here. I just think there, there money there in the budget that's spreaded out, may not be, uh, on a Pacific line item that may save for the airport, but I think throughout the budget, you know, that money can come together to get this done.
And I agree with that. And that's, I think, you know, what I put before you will accomplish just that. I, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Can I have a question? Can I ask? Do I have to say? I'm all, I'm on the private partnership board and, uh, I don't know, and, and I, and I enjoy that. And I think the airport would always be part of, or not wanting to be part of, the economic development. I think the two entangle together, but I don't know of another county in the state of South Carolina that the economic development board has anything to do other than being part of the airport. It still all comes back to council and comes back to the county administrator. All falls back in their lap and to the council's lap. They are the governing body.
And if I could write in on this comment, my comments would simply be, I agree that we as the county council, we should try to upfit it and get it running. And if there's any way that the private partnership can help us with some funds, then we'll be glad to welcome them, you know, to help us with whatever funds is lost.
It's a lot easier for councilman for several people to make the agreement than, what, twenty or thirty.
Well, you just got double D's.
Before you get that many together on something.
You got the board saying one thing, then they come into council and...
But like Chairman Finkler said, we, we, we the governing, we the governing body.
Governing body regardless, why it comes down to y'all.
But I do agree that we should get it up and running. And if there's funding that the private partnership can help us with, then we'd be glad to, to receive those funds. But, um, and we all work together like a hand in a glove. But, I mean, we all should respect one another, I think. And we've have in the past, we created a private partnership, so we showed our support towards them and there's, there's support they can show towards us to get this airport funded or whatnot, you know, we'd be glad to do that.
Anybody, anybody else had anything more to comment on?
Well, I agree with what Mr. Shafer said a while ago. He said he was on the Dillon County Airport Commission. I served on that as representative for the county council for about five to six years and we did meet. And, uh, we went through the process and we were here, or we were meeting when they started the second application. The first airport study identified the area right past Hurley Bridge Road that they wanted to put a five thousand foot runway. And I think Mr. Wilmar Ned and a group of people, he chaired that committee and the council decided not to go forward with that. They did the second study and it cost, Wilbur Smith did the study, it cost the county three hundred thousand dollars from the one cent sales tax money to do the second study. And you're right, Mr. Shafer. They told us that they weren't gonna approve it at the FAA level from, at that time. Well, Wilmer Smith said they thought they could get it approved, so we went with the study. It's a ground location, but the federal government simply denied us and the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission also denied Dillon County. And they said they were not gonna spend any money here on an airport, period. And that was the state and the federal. And we have since got back, I think they call it the NIFIS, that we are on the NIFIS now. And that is at the state level. So we are receiving money. We lost a million dollar earmark from Congressman John Spratt. He kept it in the federal budget for two years, but caused the FAA would not approve our building, a new airport. And Paul Works was still there and he also denied our funding or our approval for a new airport. So I think we need to reappoint the airport commission. I think the airport commission needs to bring a recommendation to the council, is what I think, but I'm just one councilman. We have, don't have a functioning airport commission. I know Mr. Shafer was on it last time, I was on it last time. I think some of the other people are...
Your four is dead.
Are dead. That's what I was getting to.
Johnny Brady? What Johnny Brady?
He was, the dog of Stanton.
And a guy like you, um, I can't remember his name, but my point being, if this gonna be a political decision without any input from pilots or anybody, fine. But whatever you want to do. But I think we really need to look at how we're going to extend that runway. That was what we were left with, we were denied twice as far as building the new airport. Yes, you can put five on one end and probably eight hundred to a thousand on the other end, you can get four thousand feet. And that's what we need to try to look forward to. I think we need to work toward getting to four thousand feet. But, uh, if you put gas in without somebody out there, that's a major mistake.
Well, when I did the figuring on further gas, I figured it to be self-contained. In other words, if you had a credit card, you'd be able to drop it in there and do that. Uh, if they landed, somebody's not attending.
Yeah, I thought it was managed shut off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The attendants, uh, would be, I would assume would be basically like the Marion County Airport, somebody's there from eight o'clock to, to there go from eight to five. And then, uh, they got a call on them or you call if you land there past hours. Uh, she's only seven or eight minutes away, she can be, she can be there. Uh, she works, uh, every day, Monday through Friday. And then they have what they call, they have two people that rotate the weekends. One works one weekend, one works the next weekend. Uh, I don't know all the perks and the details of it. I just know that's how they...
I kinda feel like, Kevin, we start, that we got a three thousand foot airport out there. It's doing nobody any good. Let's get it running. We got the best three thousand foot airport until we can...
And you'll create traffic, you know? And it, and it may be that you just put in literally a hundred or something.
Yeah, let me make this comment, excuse me, sir, let me make this comment if I, if I may. I agree with Council going, if, since Dillon County has elected us as the governing body and we are in a position to lead. I think what we need to do, we need to go ahead and, and take the reins in our hands and lead on this airport. I mean, listen, we got a lot of stuff going on in Dillon County, a lot of deposit stuff. I just believe the Dillon County's in a position that they've never been in before. We've got the inland port coming, we've already got Wayman Garden, we've already got a lot of plants here. So we should need to go ahead and we need to go ahead and go for it and move and lead and get this airport up and running until we can get funding and everything to get it the way we want it. Unless we leave, there's no need us creating, uh, why we gonna create a commission when, when we don't have nothing open? Once we get it open, then yeah, we need to establish and reappoint the commission and get that commission up and running. Until we take the initiative to lead and get things running, then we're not gonna get anywhere. This is just gonna be a conversation.
And I did have names put together and I did leave Council of Moody on there for to be the spokesperson for the council. Uh, and if we get the commission started back, uh, we will meet on a quarterly basis or every two months, whatever it takes. And, uh, I'll cook the meal. How about that?
But I think everything needs, probably need to be, um, probably need to be a, a new ordinance or unless you can find an old ordinance concerning the airport and the paperwork and the commission that was done. And I think everything just need to be upgraded and there need to be probably some reappointments or some more appointments concerning that commission. But I think, again, we need to go ahead and get up and start running with what we got